Very interconnected, and once we can begin to make those connections across organizational boundaries, what we'd really like to do then, after Christmas, is come back before you as a board, let this group make a presentation and say, based on, based on the things that we have seen, recognize that we have limited resources in our community, here are three to five intervention strategies that we feel like may help us make progress on some of these challenges. So that's kind of how we have it laid out. The tuition for this is going to be $125. The BDC has agreed to put $3,000 towards this program. So we're going to feed folks every day for lunch when we have them in. We'll have some type of jacket or vest for participation. So we feel like that between the tuition and the $3,000 from the BDC, we can cover those costs. We're not asking for any funding. The only thing that we're asking from y'all is just support. I mean, we'd love to have someone from county government, from county administration participate in this. I can see the benefits of a department head sitting in and really getting a broad view of how these issues are impacting our community. We will have some scholarships available, so cost shouldn't be an issue for anyone. Chairman, I'll leave it there, and if there's any questions, I want to be mindful of the time, but if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Any questions?
When did you say you're going to start?
We're going to begin taking applications this week, and we will begin in late October.
Late October.
So we're going to meet on Tuesdays, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the date off the top of my head. It's the last, the last Tuesday in October, if I remember correctly. So it'll be that one, then four Tuesdays in November.
Got to get somebody from the commissioners or administration, something over there, maybe. We'll talk with Drew a little later, see if we can get somebody involved.
Drew participated in the last one, and she can give you a little background on how we did it then.
Good results and good numbers out there. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you, Dale.
General business, next, Randy Murphy.
I would bring up the parts of fairgrounds where our camping sites, where we rent those out. Our fee was $600 for a month to start off with, and I personally feel like we need to lower that down to four so that we can actually, because, you know, right now, I think we have one camper there now, and I, you know, a lot of people might may choose to go rent a house or rent an apartment for that amount of money rather than putting our camper down there. So that's my suggestion to the board on that. He's bringing the fee down to 400 because it's just sitting there if we...
They're competitive with the other campgrounds. We aren't undercutting them, are we?
No, no, we're probably quite a bit ahead of them. I know on that.
Based on that, Mr. Chair, I will make a motion that we accept.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Is that a full hookup?
It's a full hookup, and with that fee, that includes their water and electricity.
Got a question.
I thought that the, these monthly rates or these rates were done once a year when we set the rates for the whole county. I didn't know we were, I was under the impression we weren't voting on this tonight.
There were only weekly and daily rates adopted. We never discussed a monthly rate, but Randy was approached with someone who wanted to rent it monthly, and I did have a conversation with Michael about this, and he thought 400 was appropriate for a month.
That the 400 was appropriate?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor. You in favor?
I'm in favor.
Good, five of them.
And now, next is Veterans Park. We really don't have any signs up on a leash law for the animals, and a couple of times I've been down there working, I've seen dogs kind of run and jump up on people, and not in an aggressive way or nothing like that, but, you know, somebody's just had a heart attack, you know, down there walking, and a dog jumped up on them out in the parking lot with their chest that way. I mean, I just don't, I think we need to have animals on a leash if it is any way possible.
The under restraint and control under the animal ordinance. An animal is under restraint within the meaning of this ordinance if it is controlled by means of a chain, leash, or other like device, or is sufficiently near the owner or handler to be under their control and is obedient to that person's commands, or is adequately contained within a secure enclosure, including a vehicle being driven apart. So I believe if we put a sign up that said animals need to be on the leash, we would be within the ordinance.
I think we just follow, you know, similar language or something that's right out of our ordinance. It doesn't say it's a leash law, it's just part of it, and that's the only thing that we reference in there about under control, which it does mention where we have a leash. It's not leashes per se, because we didn't want to have that in the entire county, but I think it's reasonable for use in that setting, which is a park.
Also, under our nuisance, under the animal ordinance, under nuisance, animals interfere with or attack persons or other animals, chase, snap, harass pedestrians, bicyclists, things of that nature. So we're covered under the ordinance both ways, in my opinion.
And any, any harm that comes to any citizen in this county by someone's dog, they're strictly liable for the damages regardless of what we might have said in our ordinance. That's state law, so that's going to trump, and so if somebody was harmed at the park, regardless of whether we had something in writing up at the park, then that's not going to be the responsibility to county. However, I think it's probably a good policy if there are issues with dogs that might be jumping on people.
If I may, to expand, under nuisance, animals running at large, not under control of a cop to person by means of chain, leash, or other device, or is sufficiently near its handler to be under their direct control. So it's a violation under the ordinance in two or three places, but a sign reminding would be, I think, appropriate.
I think that was our big thing, is just being able to put a sign down as you're walking into the trail that, you know, we can figure out how we need to word it, but basically, animals need to be on a, be in restraint.
Do you have the funds to purchase the signs and get them up?
In veterans fund, I do, yes.
I want to make a motion that we approve the request, Mr. Chair.
Hold the motion just a second. Bobby?
I mean, we've, we've already covered that we have to have under restraint, and I also believe, I'm not sure if the town has a similar requirements, that animals have to be under, under control.
House Park, they do, their rules sign is listed through town.
Schools, that's the same thing. They prohibit certain animals, but certain animals are allowed on school property.
On school property, there's not, not...
The, yeah, companion animals like that.
Yes, yes.
Sighted people have to have those.
Service animals, yes.
Those are all...
Be allowed, yes.
We've addressed that, but this is just giving you the authority to put up a sign.
Yes, yes.
In regards to the town, the town has a similar reference to restraint. It's not anything that says a leash is required in town, however, it says you must have proper restraint. So they do mention, exactly, the, the control. They do mention the same thing. It's not a leash law, it's just the restraint. So it's, it's similar.
I made a motion. Do I hear a second? Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five of them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Randy. Next, appoint Deputy Clerk Miranda Root. Miranda Root.
Yes, I placed this on the agenda. The last time we were in an interim county manager, county manager situation, this board wanted a deputy clerk appointed to attest signatures when I was signing on behalf of the county manager. I did get an email late this afternoon from the school of government saying that contracts, ordinances, regulations, policies, and documents that are created internally don't require an attest signature. That is the preference of this board.
Used Miranda Root the last time.
Yes.
No.
We don't have to have one legally, right? That's what you're back today.
Yes.
So whatever preference the board is.
I had a question because Ms. Root is an elected official, and I sent a request to the, a question to the school of government. They came back and said that she could have an appointment. There's no problem with that, but they do not recommend it because the legislature is now looking at this because of problems that have come up in other counties. But it is proper, we can do this, but not recommended by the school of government, the lady that handles that portion. And that was from Mr. McLaughlin. I sent a copy to all commissioners.
I think that, like I said before, I think Ms. Root filled that position. School of government says that it's up to this board to decide who fills that position. I would recommend that Ms. Root go into that position once again.
Got a motion.
Motion.
Heard once before. A motion on the floor to hear a second.
Just a question. So this is interim managers.
I need to put that in the motion, that this is an interim appointment.
I mean, if that's what the motion is. Would second the motion.
I will make that adjustment to the motion. It's temporary.
I'll second.
Mark second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Five of them. Okay, moving on down to number five, Laurel Springs Rescue Squad. Drew?
Morgan Reed, the chairman, or I'm sorry, the chief of Laurel Springs Fire Department, presented this contract for Laurel Springs there, specifically to their EMS and rescue services. It's very similar to the Allegheny County Rescue Squad with a few revisions, and Heather has looked at it ever as well as Linda Edwards with EMS.
On the floor for a motion.
Motion.
Question here, a second.
I do have a question. Under, under paragraph eight, funding to the LSVFD for EMS and rescue services will be comprised of funding, fundraising activates, that's a physics term, meaning to change. I believe it should be activities. With that change, I have no objections, Mr. Chair.
Motion back, next act. Motion cut a second. Any further discussion to make that change in that one word? All in favor? Raise your hand. Five of them. Recreation Committee update. Mr. Bobby Irvin.
The Recreation Committee, we've met two times in the last few months, and those discussions have centered around the swimming pool, the, the old pool at the high school, and the possibility of working with another county entity about creating a new outdoor pool. And we've talked to the Wellness Center on two occasions, and I think there's willingness for the Recreation Commission Committee and the Wellness Center to keep working towards a, towards some kind of outdoor pool in the future. And I'll let Michelle, she's on that committee with us, and if you want to go ahead and add some stuff to that discussion.
Yes, we have been speaking with the Wellness Center. I just would like to reiterate that this is very early in the process, and we do have plans to go up to Avery County to look at their new facility up there. By meaning that this is very early in the process, you know, we don't have a set location yet, we don't have plans, we don't have drawings, but it's just to discuss the beginnings of, of getting this going for the county, because we know how important it is for the citizens of this county, children of this county, to have an outdoor pool. So, you know, we have, Deanna Ballard has, was able to get some money from the legislature for us with this project. We also have some Beamer funds available, but it's going to obviously take more funds than that, so there would have to be some fundraising opportunities, and like I said, it's early in the game, we're just still talking about, you know, who, where, what, when, and how. So, but it is a topic up for discussion, and we do want to get a, a panel of citizens involved in this too, because, you know, this pool is for everyone, and we, we want to make sure that what we build will be, you know, what is needed and something that, you know, sustainable for patients to cover everything.
Thank you very much. I think that we have a, a visit planned right now for the 12th of this month to, to visit Avery County. They have a very nice facility, so there's a group of us from the county and from the Wellness Center that plan on making that trip. It'll be, I think it'll be an all-day trip. It's just to gather information and to see what that facility is. I believe that, that swimming pool was like roughly 186,000 gallons, give or take a few right in there, and I'm not sure what the current high school swimming pool at, located at the high school. Well, I don't know the, the gallon size there, but like Michelle said, we're in the early stages, and I think there's been good cooperation right now between the Wellness Center and the county, and we intend to keep everybody fully informed as we go. We've heard projections, if we were to be able to start tomorrow, that it would be 2024 before a pool would be ready, and, you know, we're not being able to start tomorrow, so I, I think we're looking at the summer of '24, hopefully, would be a good target date. I wouldn't push out 2025 as being a final completion date. But I, I think this committee and, like I said, the Wellness Center, the school has been involved in it. We've had some discussion with the town, and we need to form this group like Michelle was, was talking about, to get all the parties on board, because this is going to be more than the county can afford. We're going to have to have a fundraising project if this, if this comes to, comes to the future, and I just look forward to, to getting started. And I'd just like to thank all the people that have put in the time so far to do these, to have these discussions, and at some point, this board is going to have to do, will have to have some money to do a final adoption of the location, site preparation, and what the, what the swimming pool will finally look like, and that's going to be several, several thousands of dollars to get that done. But we think that the, the visit is the, the first step to take. Other than that, unless Michelle, or if anybody on the board has any questions.
Looking forward to seeing some big tables one day.
Rome was not built in a day, so just be aware that it's going to, it's going to be a process, so.
Other questions, we'll move on then. County managers comments. Ms. Todd.
I have a couple of things. Most importantly, I know we'd all like to wish Michael a speedy recovery. We've all been thinking about him and missing him, so we, he gets well soon. And David Daniel with R&amp;D Architects spent about two hours with David Spicer, Dana Phillips, and myself, and I sent those plans out to the board. He said that he hopes to complete everything and submit to permitting on September 12th, which is next Monday.
Moving on down. Any questions or comments about Drew's report? Move on down, Commissioner comments. Commissioner?
I just, Drew said about Mr. Carter, I know he's had a pretty tough go at it so far, but it sounds like we've been hearing some positive news and wish him and his family well. And we are about to kick off the political season for the fall. I just hope everybody is, is respectful of different opinions and different ideas, be willing to share, but be willing to listen, and hopefully, we can come up with a group that'll take the county to a better place than it currently is, not only the county, but state and federal. Good luck with all that, though.
I'd like to comment about the fair that was held last, last weekend. It was a four-day event. I think the weather held out for us. If anybody was there Friday and Saturday night, you couldn't find a parking place. We were fortunate to have the Woodies next door, let us use that space. Without them, we would have been in dire, dire needs. I think all the kids, when you saw them come out of there, they had a small from ear to ear. I think a few of them got stuck on the Ferris wheel for a while, and we'd like to thank, I believe it was Blue Ridge Electric came and used their bucket truck to get them down. The volunteers to put on that four-day event, it just didn't happen for those four days. It took weeks and weeks of planning, and even after the fair was over, there was several of them spent more days helping with the cleanup and people to get all their exhibits out of the black building. And I was, went by the charters, the Veterans Park today, the charters of freedom, the, the Brook Mason is down there, he started today. I hope we'll have some good weather here and get that finished in the next week or so. But I think all in all, the, the fairgrounds was the big, big event for last week, and then the Music on Main Street hit this past Saturday night, and that place was packed. You couldn't find a place to eat in town, you had to wait 30, 40 minutes, is almost like you're in Charlotte or Raleigh, but I think all the merchants did well, and I, I look forward to, I think they're going to have a few more before the, one more before the summer's over. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner John.
Yes, I'd like to advise everyone that I contacted Kristen Michaels, Michael Carter's bride, Monday, and she said that she, he was up for visitors, so Jeff Smith and I drove up, and we got to see Michael for a little bit in the intensive care. I was frankly surprised whenever Brenda and I went back Friday to find him sitting in a chair, giving the nurses a hard time, and his wife wanting to leave the hospital so that he could get back to his farm. Whenever I looked at him Monday, I figured, no, this is not going to be anything that's going to come about very quickly, but Friday, he was raring to go, and he is now home. And the only thing that I will ask for the public to do is for pray for Kristen. I mean, hey, Michael was pulling out drains, trying to get up and get out while he was in intensive care. Now he's home, she's got to fight him to keep him down. This lady is going to need your prayers. He's come around, they thought, they told him originally he would be in the hospital for a month. He was in two weeks. Now he's home, he's doing great, good spirits, and God bless his wife. And seeing what she's going through, Brenda, I'm sorry, because I'm right there with him. Other than that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Michelle?
I too would like to, to Michael that we miss him and we're praying for him, so drew for stepping in to clean. Yep. Had a lot of great events go on in the county recently, Music on Main, the Ag Fair, Cruisin's, Saturday in the Park, Demolition Derby, the list goes on and on, a lot of ribbon cuttings that shows that our, our, our chamber's working hard and we're getting new life and new businesses into this county, so that's a great thing. If you say that there's nothing to do around here, then I'm going to challenge you on that, because there's been lots of things to do around here. Air was fantastic. Like to also send a kudos out to our rec department, Austin Sprinkle and Randy Murphy, they're going full blast, they've got all kinds of opportunities going on right now for the kids involved. You've, you've been wanting it, and it's here, so there's all kinds of different sports to sign up for right now and that are ongoing, so thanks to Randy and Austin.
Thank you. I just echo the saying about Mr. Carter, miss seeing him sitting over there, and miss him being here, and wish him a speedy recovery, and also his wife. I'm sure she's, she's had her challenges with dealing with all this and stayed right by his side, and, and let's keep them all in our prayers. I'd just like to thank the fair, it was a huge success. Every night was full, and Friday and Saturday night was running over, but what he says, it takes a lot of volunteers to pull that thing off, and we certainly, kudos to each and every one of them, big thumbs up to them, because it was, it was a big success. Also, Music on Main was a huge crowd out there Saturday night, and they just plain and simple good things are going on in Allegheny County. It's, more people are coming to Allegheny County, spending the nights heads and beds, as they call it, and that says something, says something for this county. I want to thank the chamber, Deanna Ballard, give them the phone call first about, about the pool project, and, and a big thumbs up to you guys and for all the help you've done. I know Brian's worked hard on getting numbers and stuff together, and we appreciate that. Science Club roof, we've talked to those people, the roof up there, it needs, it needs replacing, and we're going to look into doing that this fall, getting some quotes. Try to make that come and go, they're paying half of it, and the county pays half of it, that was in the new lease agreement, so we'll have further about that in October on the roof. So I think that's about it for me, but if you haven't been, make church a part of your weekend, you'll, you'll come away feeling better about yourself. Anything else from anybody else? Got a motion to go into closed session under general statute.
Don't move.
Motion second under general statute, GS 143-318.11.a-4, discuss location expansion. Discuss location expansion. All in favor?
Stay in here.
Think so, we'll, we'll stay in here if that's okay. Science Club, Science Club pavilion up there.